Going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with?
Alberto Paratory.
Aziz Essan.
Norma Drummond.
Art Maroni.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I just have two quick announcements. Number one, on tonight's agenda, there's going to be no action and no by this board on items number seven and eight, so whoever's number nine be ready to go with number six, right after number six. And the other only thing I wanted to make was an announcement that this Thursday is going to be a community meeting regarding the town's new master plan that we've been working on for almost a year now at the community at 6 o'clock. So if anybody's interested in hearing and seeing all the work that's been done so far regarding the master plan, please plan to join us, 6 o'clock Thursday at the community center. Our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, September 24th, and Tuesday, October 22nd. We have one set of minutes to approve from the meeting of July 23rd. Very, very few. Oh, Jeff, Julie's not even here to hear this. All right, very few corrections, but the corrections we do want to make are significant, so.
I made a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, so the way we operate is the first part of our meeting is a public hearing. Those are applications that this board's already had an opportunity to review, and so we then send notice out to your neighbors so that if there's anything they think we should be aware of, they can come and tell us all about it. Then the second part of the meeting is going to be reviews, which is generally the first time this board looks at an application. At the appropriate time, we will set up the reviews for a public hearing, but, you know, again, most times it would be the next meeting, but there's no public comment on reviews tonight. It's just the board's opportunity to understand what the application is about. So let's get right into it. Item number one, Appeal 4101, Gabriella Rose, LTD or Florries, Jamie Florrie, 1997 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 76-foot front line variance, a three-foot side yard variance for a proposed vacuum station, a 67-foot front yard, six-foot side yard variance for an air station, 10-foot side yard variance for a cooler, 10-foot side yard variance for an ice chest, a 10-foot side yard variance for a propane cage, and a 12-foot maximum lot coverage variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, we are technically reopening this one.
Reopening?
Yeah, we're reopening this one. Okay, so we are open, though. So Brian, as we've said before, there's a lot going on on this site. When last we met, though, the planning board hadn't done any action. Can you give us an update where you're at with the planning board?
Yeah, we have a fellow carrying the planning board going over the air station and the vacuum station in front. We're looking at the front part of the hearing, how it exists inside. We talked about some valid locations in the back to protect the approach we have and the ice chest, second dumpster refuse enclosure. The site plan improvements, we have a comment related to maintenance of some of the grass areas behind the dumpster, the location of the site plan to ensure that a long vegetation behind ours maintained. We also talked about removing the vacuum station, the disco and air station going in front. Of course, they have signage limiting parking time, so to ensure that if somebody needs to use the air station, they park their car in front of the other benches. You know, the site is very active, lot traffic in and out, it was designed, started parking along Lake Drive. As part of the original site plan, we had no parking signage along Lake Drive, so actually that's extended lane in there. So we did double more than we do with Alex. We was best to keep people from parking on Lake Drive. In addition to that, as part of the site plan approval, now again, we're working with town attorney here, we've come up with an employee parking schedule to work with businesses that have joined Fortis Gas Station to see if additional spaces could be leased. I believe right now they have created the Archway Plaza for a couple of spaces for employee parking, and they're looking to.
There you go.
The applicant.
Now we can hear you. Thank you.
I did that on purpose. The applicant is looking to work with business owners on both sides to see if additional spaces can be maintained. So that was written into the site plan approval. We were granted site plan approval with that condition, so Secra was closed out, and obviously we're back here.
So you have site plan approval?
They have site plan approval, and they received a neg deck from the planning board under Secra.
Subject to, of course.
Oh, subject, of course, the condition being that the ZBA approves the variances.
All right, okay, just making sure, you never know. All right. So how many employees are there at any given time?
I don't know the exact number that we have right now. I believe he's got four or five spaces with Archway Plaza that he has a lease agreement with, and then we do show three spaces in the back where the refuse enclosure is. I asked the applicant just to provide me peak employee count between Duncan and the gas station, just so we can coordinate that number with the town attorney.
Didn't I understand Duncan moved out of there?
Did they? I don't know. Did they?
Not yet?
I think they're still in there.
Okay. So, never mind, forget I said that.
So I don't have that.
Folks, can you take your conversation outside?
I'm sorry.
Because you're just well close to the microphone.
Right. So regarding that, we were going to work with the town attorney just to make sure that we try to maximize that lease agreement with any of the neighbors that we can.
So comments or questions from board members?
I mean, I did a site review, and it's a very tight spot, and, again, the solution of having employees, you know, we all.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else. Gives a little bit turning radius, a little bit more room for customers and for this activity, so that's a positive development.
Right. And with this application, both ZBA and planning board, you know, we're not increasing any retail space. This, again, was just repositioning of an existing air station and a new vac station, and again, trying to accommodate, you know, parking with the neighbors. So we're trying to do the best that we can out there. It is a pretty busy site.
So you're not increasing, you're not increasing the size of the building, so yeah, I agree, you're not increasing retail space, but then why do they need the cooler if they didn't need it before?
Their delivery times with the storage of product, because you have the Duncan aspect in and the gas station aspect, storage is very tight in there as far as refrigeration.
Okay, all right.
So it would help them with deliveries, maybe stretching the deliveries out a little bit, just to have that space to store more product, cold product.
That makes sense. That's helpful.
Now, the air hoses, are they going to be long enough to go on the other, onto the main road, or is this just going to be, are they going to be just limited?
Let's hope not. We don't want people parking.
No, because one of the issue was that people were going on the other side and using it, I mean, on the, from the road, they were accessing the air hoses.
I'm suspecting, you know, your average parking space is 20 foot deep, right? So your air hose is probably going to be around that 20-foot length, so.
So that we won't have the problem of, current problem of people on the, on the main road or on the road accessing the air hoses.
Right. The hose should be longer, just because that hose is right there in front of that space. The other thing, too, is the air hose originally was located in the back where there's not much of a visual, visual presence.
Okay.
So now that it's in front, the thought process was is that we can see it, if it does happen, they can enforce it to, hey, listen, you got to come in the site, you can't stretch it across the road.
Yeah, that's what, what the issue was, that then you'll have another expansion of the facilities. Other than that, I don't have an issue.
Auditorium.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone here, excuse me, who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jamie Florrie, 1997 Route 52, Hopewell Junction, requesting a whole bunch of variances related to the equipment that he has on the site there to be able to provide services at the gas station? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would say close and reserve.
Why?
Because we don't have a.
We still have the draft decision.
Oh, okay, right, so then, yeah, we have to close and reserve.
Yeah, because we don't have the, okay, so I make a motion to close and reserve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So you don't have to come next month, but just, the first part of the agenda will be the decision. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Brian. Item number two, Appeal 4115, George Pacheco, 71 Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot side yard variance for an existing chicken coop, 18-foot rear yard variance for an existing greenhouse, and a 20-foot rear yard variance for an existing pergola pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. I'm just realizing, folks, that we didn't put anything on here about these bridges. There's nothing in the noticing about the bridges.
There's nothing else.
Okay, so what was published did have them?
Yes.
Okay. Because just for explanation, well, let me, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are reopened. Good evening.
Good evening.
In the discussion that we've had with Mr. Pacheco, one of the things that we, you know, we were, we made aware of was the fact that there were multiple three bridges on his property, because he's got multiple streams crossings, and so for him to be able to get, him and his dogs to be able to get to different parts of the site, these bridges exist, and they're not just like a flat passageway. They're actually very nice, very, you know, very nice-looking bridges made from, you said trees that actually fell on your property.
Yes, that's correct.
And anchored into the ground and everything else, so that they won't wash away in any kind of flooding condition.
Right.
All right, so what we've got is you've got multiple things going on on your property. You do have a flood plain on your property, so, you know, part of this would be if you do get approved, you're going to have to get a flood plain development permit. I think you've already had a conversation with the engineer, Rick Witt, about that?
Yes.
But, yeah, there's a lot going on. We do, before we open it up to the public, I do need to let you know that I did, we did receive one email. It's labeled from a concerned citizen. There's, and this is, it says, "There's an alarming amount of people on this road that have roosters on very small lots, and my understanding is you need 10 acres. It is getting to the point where at 4:30 in the morning, there are roosters all up and down the road waking people up, and they continue literally all day long with no peace. One of the people is asking for a variance at 71 Van Black Road. It is becoming a huge nuisance for people surrounding, for, to, a few people surrounding several properties. I have no problems with anything they are doing aside from the roosters. Please advise them on the law concerning roosters on under 10 acres and the penalties." I'm not going to read the last line, yes. The last line doesn't pertain to your application, so that's why, I'm not going to go there. But my understanding is when the town, when Matt was out there, they, he did not see that you had any roosters, so.
All my neighbors have roosters, I don't.
Okay, but you are, so you're confirming you do not have any roosters?
I hear them.
A while back, he did, but they're gone, and Michelle and I have been there, what's his name, Rick Witt's been there, but we haven't seen any roosters there.
So, education point for everybody else, you need 10 acres to have a rooster, but chickens are definitely allowed, so as long as, you know, we're confirming with you, there are no roosters on your property. All right, when last we met, we did ask you, because we were concerned about the fact that these elaborate bridges were there and how well they were anchored and secured and everything else, and we did ask you to try to check around and find an engineer that might come out and kind of give you a report on them, and I have a letter or a note here from you regarding what you, how these things were constructed, but I guess you were not able to get, you know, and there's pictures to, you know, to kind of detail the information you're giving us, but just explain, why are we getting this versus a report from an engineer?
The cost is a little bit too high. The lowest one, you know, it was like 1,600 just to get a letter from them. I tried multiple structural engineers, and it was, you know, the lowest was 1,600 just to write me a letter, and they had to do like site visits.
Well, yeah, because they'd have to come out and look, so there's, there are time associated with doing that. All right, so there's, I think, I think, again, my concern is the bridge that's on the property line, all the way in the back.
Which it, I printed the information out with the anchors that I use, and it can hold up to 750 pounds, and there's one in every corner, so it's definitely not going to move anywhere, nor has moved.
And just tell me what's behind your property, what's, how close is the closest house?
There's no closest house. It's all, you know, trees and everything. There's a lot of trees behind it. I'm the only one that cleaned it.
Who owns the property behind your house?
The one that has the right of way to my right-hand side, me looking out to the street, and it's only.
It says, "Now we're formerly Grape House LLC." What is Grape House LLC?
Somebody bought it from Queens. He does, buy houses on auction. I know that because he came in and introduced himself. But it's all wetland, there's nothing back there.
Yeah, because, again, we commented that so much of your property is very, very wet. Did we find out if this is natural wetland, or this is just?
I call it wetland.
Natural wetland as opposed to man.
Well, what we worried about was, was this one the one we were worried about with buffer, or no?
No.
No, okay. There's a different one.
Yeah.
Okay. Too many of them going on. All right, so any comments or questions from board members on this one?
Again, my, I am concerned about the bridges, because, you know, you've constructed it, next month you sell it to somebody, they get injured, and then the town is, like, why did you approve it with just an applicant's words? So that's why I asked that it be done by a professional.
Right.
So, you know, again, my concern still stands.
I understand. I tried to build it if it helps in any.
I understand that, I mean, you know, people are really good, but again, unfortunately, there needs to be a paper trail, okay? We approved, you know, if it was just a chicken coop, no problem, because it's like, but again, these are bridges, and again, how much weight can they take? I mean, you know, for example, you may have, you know, the next owner may, may, you know, maybe have, may have more weight, and so that could create a situation for that family, and then they will assume that because we had given an approval and asserted, I mean, a CEO or, you know, an approval, and that means that it complied with the rules and regulations of Town of East Fishkill, and that is, again, my concern that I raised last time.
If it helps in any way, there's no way you can put a tractor in there, or like, you know, it withstands, the width for every tree is like over nine inches.
But I need a professional's independent analysis of that. Because I'm not an expert in figuring out how much weight these wood sections can withstand, and it is like three bridges.
Correct. I even put in the information from Google search that says that cedar trees we can hold up.
You know, you need to speak a little closer to the microphone, I can't even hear you.
I am, I am self speaking.
Yeah, Google search gives you lots of information.
Whether it's accurate or not is.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea.
Correct, and it will be used only for people going back and forth, but I don't plan.
But again, next owner is going to rely on your approval. Okay, if we approve it, that's what they, so the owner will not know that you and I, or that we had this conversation. That's why I wanted somebody, and again, I don't see the advertising also of the bridges, so that's another concern, it may be to the, on the thing, but, you know.
And if it's required, I don't really need the one in the property line.
Say it again, what?
The one in the property line, I won't need it. Like, that I can remove, that's not a problem, but the other ones are like well-built and attached to trees, there's no, no way they're going to move.
See, okay, there is a chicken coop variance requested?
Yes.
A greenhouse requested, a pergola requested, and that's it? I don't know which one is a bridge.
I didn't think I needed it from the beginning, because I was just told to anchor them down, everything.
Jackie, two of them would have needed variances.
It wasn't, they, it wasn't on the original application, the purchase wasn't on there, the original application, so.
One of them, the one at the corner is on the property line.
That's the one.
The one closer to that garage is only three feet in, so that's a structure that's three feet in, it's less than 20 feet. That would have needed a, and the other one is 26.7 from the sideline, but it's 23.5 from the rear line, so that would have needed a variance. So all three bridges would have needed a variance.
The one that is 20-something feet is, they call it a pergola, which, that's what it's called. That's what they quoted it as, whenever I asked the permit for it.
Okay, so there's nothing around the garden?
I'm sorry, say that again.
There's a garden labeled here. Is anything, is there anything around the garden? There's no bridge at the garden?
No.
Okay, so your bridge is at the pergola.
The pergola is the bridge. That's, I think, what, that's what I might understand.
So that's 29.7 feet from the rear line?
Yes.
So it's not the 50 feet that's required for a structure?
Correct.
So, so, yeah, that would have needed a variance as well. So were any of these advertised, or no?
The pergola was.
Well, the pergola was, but not.
The one, the one was, yeah.
Okay. Well, the other two?
Because it's, right now, three variances are requested, chicken coop, greenhouse, and pergola. Now, where is the greenhouse?
Greenhouse is the garden.
Pardon me?
The greenhouse is the garden.
Oh, the, okay, okay, so I just have to maybe.
Resolution.
Okay. So chicken coop, okay, that's number one. Greenhouse is, garden is the greenhouse. That is two, and pergola is number three. Okay, fine. Okay, so the, so the two bridges.
What you're saying, you can take this one down?
You can take that one down.
Being it's on the property line, I believe that one should come down.
Okay.
Nothing should be on, that close to your.
That's the bridge to nowhere, because.
Yeah, exactly. It's at the end of your property, you can't go anywhere on your property with it back there, so.
Yeah.
So I think that one has to come down. So the other one, what is, how tall is the other bridge?
It is like probably three feet wide, and it's not, I even wrote it down, it's two feet from the water, and it's, I like, I put a stick all the way down as far as I can go, like through the mud and everything, and it is only like three feet and seven inches, I believe, the, like two.
So is that the flower garden bridge?
Yes, that's what I call it, the flower.
That one seems like it's pretty high. This one, this one looks like it's higher off, older than the other.
Correct. That's when it, water dries down, like right now, when the water dries down, but the other day when I measured it, the picture that I took early, but when I measure it, you can see on this one.
It's almost like four feet above the water?
No.
No.
No, it's not that.
This one.
It's a trench. It's a small trench, it's not.
Maybe two feet, yeah.
Okay, two feet.
And you can see on here, too.
Yeah, I understand that, but again.
It keeps going. You can see it's not that high of a distance.
But the actual railing that you have up is how tall? The fencing that's with it?
Oh, that should be around here, so like four feet. The railing is four feet.
Okay.
Because I can put my arms in there, too.
And it's only on one side?
Right, and it's attached to the trees, like you can see, it's attached to the tree on one side, and the tree.
The trees don't last forever, so anchoring something to a tree doesn't.
Oh, it has anchors, too. It has two anchors in each side.
Yeah, I, I'm really, I still have this issue with the bridges. The pergola is okay, garden is okay, the chicken coop is okay, but the two bridges, one bridge, two bridge is, I mean, I mean, even though this was, again, they should have, at least one or two, both the bridges should have been advertised, so they were, because they're right structured next to the property.
Understood, but.
So, and do we need.
That's not the applicant's fault, so.
Okay, so do we need to re-advertise, or?
I don't think so.
I think the applicant already said that he, I mean, it's already been discussed here, and the applicant said that he would take down that extra bridge, and really, I think the other bridge was advertised as a pergola.
No.
No, it's the third bridge.
It's the third bridge?
So we're not.
But it's part of the pergola.
No.
It's part of the pergola.
That's the third bridge.
Correct.
We're talking about the second bridge.
The garden, the bridge.
Not the one in the back that he said he'd take down, the flower garden one, or whatever, yes.
Okay, there is a bridge that is three feet from the wire fence.
Right, that one.
That's what we're talking about. The bridge that is three feet from the wire fence.
So again, it's a bridge that's taking you to just three feet of your property.
It's three feet.
Yeah.
I don't know why you need that bridge.
Just looks nice, I can walk to the other side.
This coop is.
It looks nice?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with you, it looks, it's a nice, but I need a structural engineer or somebody who is knowledgeable to say yes. So there's aesthetics, and then there's a structure, so, I mean, so, and again, for the town to approve something, it needs to, I mean, I don't know if the building department needs to give a CEO, I don't know. I mean, would you be giving a CEO on the?
We wouldn't be giving anything on a bridge without a PE letter.
And again, if you approve it.
Right.
Yeah, so then we're approving.
We approve it as a structure.
You're not going to be able to close this out until you can give the building department a letter from an engineer.
Can I just remove the garden bridge, too?
I think that's.
And call it a day? Because, you know, I'm.
That would be the easiest.
Yeah.
That's your path of least resistance, okay?
Less, less costly, too.
I mean, we can adjourn the hearing and come back next month?
It is, okay, thank you, because the cost of getting and hiring an engineer is too high for me to be able to afford at this point.
Okay, so you're not going to be able to apply for a permit and close out that permit with the building department?
Correct.
You're better off just taking the bridge down?
Correct, because it's going to come down, that I have to pay the engineer, and I cannot afford it, and basically, it's anchored down as requested.
So he's going to take down two bridges?
Correct.
And we're left with the pergola, chicken coop.
I don't have a problem with any of those.
And the greenhouse.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with any of the three other items.
Any other questions or comments from board members, or can I at least see if there's any other comments?
Is it, is it really a 21 rear yard variance for the existing pergola? Because was it 29?
It's 20, it's 29.7, so it's really 21 feet, not 20.
In the resolution, in the decision order, if the board decides to adopt it, it must be amended to be 21.
Right.
21-foot rear yard variance.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from George Pacheco, 71 Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-yard sideline variance for an existing chicken coop, an 18-foot rear yard variance for an existing greenhouse, and a 21-foot rear yard variance for an existing pergola? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Why don't you read this one, yeah, just to be careful on it?
Correct, exactly. This is appeal number 4115. The applicant is requesting a, one, a 13-feet side yard variance from an existing, for an existing chicken coop, two, a 18-feet rear yard variance from an existing greenhouse, and three, a 21-feet rear yard variance from the, from, for an existing pergola, all from the requirements of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the schedule of bulk regulations. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assan, whereas approximately 60% of the applicant's property is located in the floodplain, and whereas there's a stream that runs through the property, and whereas, in order to make the property safer for himself and his family and his animals... Okay, I have, that will be all deleted, I guess.
Well, he did do that.
He did.
But he's gonna remove them now, so...
And then you can add another, whereas, whereas the applicant agreed to remove the bridges.
Okay, I can do that. Whereas, in order to make the property safer for himself, his family, and his animals, the applicant installs small bridges with accessory structure, and the applicant has agreed to remove...
Such structures.
Such bridges. Whereas, this is a type 2 action under SECR and no further action is required. And whereas, a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on July 17, 2024. And whereas, the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on July 23, 2024, which was continued on August 27, 2024. And whereas, the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired results could not be achieved by either means due to the existing streams on the property. The variances are substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Jorge...
George Pacheco.
Pacheco, for, one, a 13-feet sideline variance for an existing chicken coop. Number two, a 18-foot rear yard variance for an existing greenhouse. And three, a 21-feet rear yard variance for an existing pergola, all from the requirements of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the schedule of bulk regulations on the condition that the applicant applies for and receives a floodplain, plain development permit. Plead for the result that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Sir, second?
Second.
Votes as follows: Aziz.
Aye.
Alberto.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Now you'll have to deal with the building department to make sure they have everything they need so that all your structures are good. All right?
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, appeal 4117, Christina Delsavich. 124 Sandy Pines Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot height and front yard variance for an existing 58-foot high fence pursuant to section 194-98 and the schedule of bulk regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we had an opportunity to review this last month. Essentially, you have a five-foot fence in your front yard. It's like five and a half feet back from the property line, right? From the front, it doesn't go all the way to the front, to the road?
From the, from the front, it was 1.6 feet on one side and six feet on the other.
Well, that's its difference from the side yard?
Right.
From the front of your property, from the street? How far away is it?
From the street? But I know it's probably 25 feet.
Oh, okay, all right. It's a black cast iron fence, so you can see it, right?
Right.
But so, it's not like a blinding white fence that we see in many places?
No.
It doesn't have sight distance, so it's brought back enough that it's not impacting anybody's ability to see, to be able to pull out of your driveway or anything? You put this fence up about a year ago?
I did.
Okay. Now, we also asked you to get some measurements on your survey so we could get a new survey here tonight?
Right, there, I'm there.
That's 3.8 feet.
All right, so Sandy Pines, so you're 37 feet away from the, you're 55 feet from the front yard. You've got a shed, there's a swing set. So it looks like the fence, they're calling it aluminum fence. It looks like the fence is, goes all the way to the front yard.
It does not.
Does it go across the front of your yard?
Yes, it does.
All right, come here, come here. This survey is showing me that that's the aluminum fence.
Right.
So is this, how tall is this portion here?
58 inches.
So it's right in the front of your property? It's, you said it starts 25 feet back. That's what you just told me?
No, you said from the road.
Yeah. The road's right here.
It's like five feet off the road.
Yeah, it's like five feet off the road. It's five and a half feet off the road. The road is right here.
It's not 25 feet from the road.
The road is right here.
We're having this discussion already. You were there how many times?
Yeah.
This is way more than 20 feet from the road. My fence.
You're...
Why would you have a fence in the middle?
The fence is right here on the pictures of it.
Okay, why would you, I'm just asking you a question. Why would you have a fence in the middle of your front yard? I'm missing something.
I mean, the thing is...
It was originally in the right of way.
It looks like it's on the...
Yes, it was on the right of way.
Yeah, it was originally on the right of way and you moved it back, but we're not talking 25 feet.
The right of way is only...
From the road, yes.
The right of way is only 10 feet wide. So if it's just off the right of way...
Haven't come out in measure. I'm not gonna argue this every time I come here. We didn't have this argument last time and now we're having it.
Because now we have a survey, all right?
We had a survey last time too. The only part that was missing, you wanted me to state how far the fence was from the property line on the neighbor's side. All this was here.
When was this taken?
All right.
When was this taken?
And that's why in my notes from the last minute...
This is what he's...
I have, that it's, that we discussed the fact that it's five feet and a half feet.
At least 25 feet from the road.
Do you have a picture? Do you have a picture or you do not?
The thing is, when you talk about the road, the road is public property.
I understand.
Okay, so it has to be from your property in. So you don't, you cannot do, take it from the road because, you know, whoever did the survey is showing this Sandy Pine Boulevard. And so we're looking at, and this is your property, the dark line is your property. So it's, it's only, you know, like five, five point, five feet, six inches. Right here, it shows you five feet.
That's the, that's the property line. That's not your... So they're stating that the property line is way more than...
See, it has to be...
Should be two feet from the property line. He's 1.6.
See, the thing is, this is your property. The dark is your property.
And that's in front of it.
Yeah, so it's five, you know, it's five feet from you.
I have a picture of it.
Well, okay, if you have a picture, that would help.
More than that though, too, really.
I've given him the variance for the height.
I don't have the tax report. I do, okay.
He specifically asked me to have that put on the survey.
I get it, I understand.
We said we're good to go and now we're good to go.
No, we didn't, we never said we were good to go. We just said we needed that on the survey.
Is that the side yard or that's the...
That's the, this is the front yard? And this is the side, I guess. Let's see where it goes this way.
There we go. I even have the measurements, 1.6. It was 19 feet and then it was moved back some more.
I mean, it's right there.
Look.
No, no, I understand, but look, here's the picture. See that there's a road?
You tell me that that's five feet?
Well, maybe the surveyor didn't do it right.
Talking about different, is he talking about, is that...
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, the surveyor messed it up because...
There's no way it's five feet. It's literally 20 feet from the road to my fence.
Okay.
But this is a old, this was before it was moved back.
Ah, okay, then that explains it, okay.
This was way before it was moved back.
Well, this is the side.
Well, yeah, that's the side, okay.
This is the front. That's not 20 feet.
This is way before it was moved back.
Okay.
This is the first, so it's moved back. So you see how this was curving in? Even then, I moved the foot back.
Okay, so that helps.
That's not reflecting the...
But again, the survey doesn't show it, it just...
But they're stating that the property line is that many feet in from the road.
I mean, right now it is...
This is not current.
1.6.
This is that he's moved it since then.
Right.
So you can't go by this picture.
But I, here's about...
And I have a feeling of the, this reflects this and the old and not the new.
So he did not, he didn't...
Maybe, but maybe, oh, so he got it out of the right of way and this shows the right of way here.
Right, so they're saying that this is the right of way. They're saying it's...
He just didn't give us measurements. The surveyor should have given a measurement.
But it is, the surveyor is right though because I've measured from the house and I'm in at 50 feet. This states that the right of way is 55. And I'm in at 52.
Okay, all right. So why do we need the fence in the front yard? Come up back to the microphone, please, just you. We're now having the public hearings. Anything that we said during our review, we now need to get into the public record.
So I mean, there's other people, there's other people in the development that have fences in their front yard.
Are they five-feet-tall fences or are they four-foot-tall fences?
No, they're five-foot-tall fences.
Okay, and we're not talking about other people? We're talking about your property here, all right?
But I mean, I want a fence, you know?
Is it a wrought iron fence or an aluminum?
No, it's an aluminum black fence.
So the fence is now right next to the tree that's there, basically?
No, it's behind the trees.
Oh, so it's...
He said it was this.
Right.
Oh, so it is on the other...
Way behind the trees.
Oh, okay, so that one tree that is there, so that tree is now...
There's two trees.
There's four trees on the front.
Four trees, okay. So this new fence, or where...
The relocated.
Relocated fence is between the house and the four trees. Right.
But, okay, that makes sense because I was going by the survey of, yesterday's survey, August 26.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other comments or questions from board members?
Okay, what are the issues?
There is a letter in here?
Okay, that was only issue, okay.
All right, before I open it up for anybody who may be in the room, let me read this letter. There's a letter dated Friday, August 2. This email is in reference to a request for a zoning variance for a fence at 124 Sandy Pines Boulevard. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the scheduled hearing but would like our voices to be heard. We are not opposed to a fence that complies with the town code. However, this variance should not be approved. The alleged hardship was self-imposed as the homeowner chose to not follow the town code for fences. This issue has been ongoing for a number of years. And while they have moved the fence back to the off-town property, they have continued to intentionally disregard the town code regarding fence height location. The variance request is unique and alters the character of the neighborhood. We have heard neighbors and our guests commenting negatively about the appearance of the fence. If the town were to approve the variance, it would negatively impact the property value of nearby residents, including my own. Respectfully submitted, George and Jill, Nohi, 177 Sandy Pines Boulevard. So again, I'm gonna ask you to state for the record, why do you think you need a fence? Why do you need your front yard fence?
I have four children that are six and under, so...
Okay, so it's more than you just want a fence?
Yeah.
You, you put a fence up so that, does the fence go across the driveway?
No.
Is, do the children have play equipment in the front or are they have play equipment in the backyard?
On the side yard.
On the side yard?
Where the swing set is.
Okay. I mean, you have, you have a big property, but I recognize that your fence only is, is, only a very small portion of your property is fenced because you've got...
I have a lot of wetland, as you can see on there.
You have a lot of wetlands going on there.
So that's one of the reasons too for having a fence in the back.
All right. All right, any other comments or questions for board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Christina Delsavich, 124 Sandy Pines Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot height and front yard variance for an existing 58-foot high fence?
58 inch.
Oh, 58 inches.
Yeah, so it's just high of, just shy of five feet?
Yeah, 58 inches. So it's just...
60 inches is five feet. So that's why we go up to the full foot, so we give them the five feet.
Yeah, five.
I think I'm gonna encourage us to close and reserve on this one and then...
Yeah, I mean, I would...
I think we need, just because we have to consider the neighbor's letter and...
And then again, to make sure, I mean, I don't know, we need to take the measurements? Okay, so I make a motion to close and reserve.
They just need the front yard variance.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so again, like one of the previous applications, we'll put you on for a decision for next month. But we've closed, we won't take any more public comment. It's just we have to consider the comment that just came in. All right?
All right.
So we'll, you don't have to come next month. We'll just send you, the decision will be sent to you, but you're welcome to come. Item number four, appeal 4118, Elena and Patrick McHugh, 9 God Street Road, Wappingers Falls, requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 12-foot by 24-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107 and the schedule of bulk regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marcus, I'm the new homeowner.
Oh, okay, good, welcome.
My name is Matt Alvano, I'm representing Patrick and Elena McHugh in the past.
Got it. So for the record, because we're now in a public hearing, so anything we discussed in the review should now get on the public record. So the McHughes have sold this house. This gentleman is the new owner. They had a shed in the backyard that was a little different than most sheds. The rear end of it was up in the air for some reason. I understand you've now landscaped around it or done something around it?
Uh, yes, the slope of the land, I just, that's why there's a void underneath, just so it's level, but I put lattice fencing around it.
Okay.
But I also dug down about 10 inches so no critters can-
Okay, good.
Go underneath.
You agreed with us that it looked very strange. Just-
Pretty impressive to keep it straight and level.
Yeah. Floating.
It's one of the strangest things I've seen, but whatever, it's, you know, I shouldn't be surprised at this point, so. All right, so I think that was the only, our real only concern about what we were seeing with this was the fact that it was-
Odd.
It was, and it's been, when something like is so out of the realm of what's normal, it strikes you as negative, it strikes you negatively, and I don't, it's so, it was such a, probably such an easy fix to give it such a more positive impression of it, that's all.
It was.
So comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Elena and Patrick McHugh, 9 God Street Road, Wapinders Falls, requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing 12-foot by 24 or 240 square foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure. Appeal number 4118, Elena and Patrick McHugh, a 10-foot rear line variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 12-by-20 feet, 240 square feet shed. Resolution offered by Alberto Paratori. Whereas the property consists of multiple tax parcels and whereas the shed that is subject of this application was installed by prior owners and whereas the applicant agreed to move to a smaller shed on the property out of the front yard, which removed the need for second variance and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA and no further review is required and whereas the legal notice was published in the Duchess, in the Southern Duchess News on August 21st, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on August 27th, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could not be achieved by any other means. The variance is not substantial given the size of the property. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Elena and Patrick McHugh for a 10-foot rear line variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 12-by-20 foot, 240 square feet shed. Be it further resolved that within five day, five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Before we second that, I just want to, I'm just noticing in my record here that last month we did get a notice, we did get a letter from a neighbor and we never read that into the record, so just-
Okay.
Sure.
Before we adopt that resolution, I just want to read into the record that we did get a, a letter here from Marcus C.A., say?
C.
C, thank you. I hate to say names wrong. Good afternoon, this document serves as written permission granted to Elena and Patrick McHugh to orchestrate the request for a variance in accordance with the town of East Fishkill to the property located at 9 God Street Road, Wapinders Falls. Questions or concerns may be directed to, and he just writes his name and phone number, so. So the neighbor was in support of this, all right? So now that we have that on the record, do I, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set, okay?
Yep.
Welcome.
Aziz.
Have a good night, guys. All right, next. Item number five, Appeal 4120, Peter Corcino, 9 Marion Avenue, Wapinders Falls, requesting an 18-foot side yard variance for an existing 11-foot, 11-by-11-foot or 121 square foot pergola pursuant to Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening.
Hello?
So in discussing your, this is another one where there's a sale of the property, right?
Yes, correct.
Right, and in discussing the, what was actually there, I think we spent more time on the other structures on the property than we did on the pergola. For the record, the pergola is visible from the road, but it is very tastefully done. It's, it's very nice, so. We got more caught up though in the fact that you had a canvas structure and a temporary container that had, your definition and my definition of temporary were not the same. But I understand you've now removed that container.
Oh, everything's out.
Everything, okay, all right. So that being said, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Peter Corcino, 9 Marion Avenue, Wapinders Falls, requesting an 18-foot side yard variance for an existing 11-foot by 11-foot pergola? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is Appeal number 4120, applicant is Peter Corcino, requesting a 18-foot sideline, side yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulation for an existing 11-by-11, 11 feet by 11 feet, 121 square foot pergola. A resolution offered by Zoning Board Member Aziz Assan, whereas the pergola is secured to the ground and part of the pool area and whereas the applicant has had a long-term shipping container and fabric cardboard located at the property and whereas the applicant is moving and discovered the need for the variance during the municipal search and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA and no further review is required and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 21st, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on August 27th, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by any other means as the pergola is anchored into the property. The variance is substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Peter Corcino for a 18-foot side yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 11 feet by 11 feet, 121 square foot pergola subject to the fabric cardboard and storage container being removed from the property.
You can strike that because it was already-
And the applicant has confirmed that the fabric cardboard and the storage container have been removed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
I lost my agenda there. All right, item number six, Appeal 4121, Peter Albus, 57 Thistle Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 25-foot side yard and an 11-foot rear yard variance for an existing 15-by-22 or 330 square foot outdoor kitchen pursuant to Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Are you the mother-in-law again or mother?
Yeah, mother.
Okay, because the family is, since they moved to Florida already.
They're in Florida, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
So what we talked about last month, what we discovered on this property, beautiful, beautiful backyard, the stonework on the walls and everything else was really pretty amazing. So there is an outdoor kitchen, it was built, or installed, we think in like 2008, it's been there for a long time. And, you know, now that they're moving, it just, obviously it came up in the municipal search and we have to clean it up, so.
Correct.
It's not visible to the neighbors, so it's, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good, I think there was an issue about the retaining wall, has that issue been resolved?
That was resolved.
Yeah, that was resolved.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm good.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Peter Albus, 57 Thistle Lane, Hopewell, requesting a 25-foot side yard, side yard and an 11-foot rear yard variance for an existing 15-foot by 22-foot outdoor kitchen? Seeing none, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Sorry, to close the public hearing.
So moved. You're confusing me. Second.
All on favor, I'm sorry, yeah. All on favor, aye.
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 All right, resolution.
Appeal number 4121, applicant Peter Albus, for a 25-foot side yard variance and 11-foot rear yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 15-foot by 22-foot, 330 square foot outdoor kitchen. Okay, 57 Thistle Lane, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by Zoning Board Member Art Mahoney. Whereas the outdoor kitchen was installed around 2008 and whereas the applicant applied for the variances after a municipal search was completed in order to ensure that all work done at the property had obtained the necessary permits and approvals and whereas the property has a retaining wall designed by a professional engineer to prevent mudslides and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA and no further review is required and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 21st, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on August 27th, 2024 and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the community as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result could not be achieved by other means. The variances are substantial, the variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Peter Albus for a 25-foot side yard variance and 11-foot rear yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Town Code and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 15-foot by 22-foot, 330 square foot outdoor kitchen. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Zoning Board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Alberto?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. All right, good luck.
Thank you very much to the board and everybody here for your patience with me.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
No worries. All right, as I previously mentioned, there is no action tonight on items number seven and eight, so next is number nine, Appeal 2216, Shenandoah Farms, LLC, 270 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an extension on their soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on July 8th, 2008 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. The permit was originally issued July 8th, 2008 and renewed through October 27th, 2024. Good evening.
Good evening.
So you are here as you have to do every couple of years.
Two years run by.
Yeah, come in and check in. Last time we saw you, your DEC permit was getting ready to expire, so.
Right, now it's been renewed.
That has been renewed, but that gets, that's on a different cycle, right? That gets renewed for like five years?
Yes, that's a five year cycle.
Okay, so that's good through 2027?
Something like that.
Some point in 2027, okay.
They have it, I brought them over.
Okay, all right, and the, for the board members, the, our building department was able to get over, Matt was able to get over and do an inspection, there are no complaints on file and everything, all your stormwater management and everything appeared to be as it should be, so. Can you just tell me for the record again, you know, what are you, what's actually being mined there? Because I think it's important for people-
Bank run gravel.
Yeah, because I think it's important for people to know if there's not many places where mining and gravel can be gotten from anymore, so it's really important for some of these-
Primarily for septic systems.
Yeah, so I think that's just important for the record, for the people in this town.
Yeah, because I've been on this board for many years and every few years, every two years you guys are here and I've never asked that question, like, what are you mining?
Yeah.
So it's just the gravel for the septic system, basically?
That's basic.
That's the biggest user of.
That's the biggest, yeah, the biggest user. There are, somebody needs some bank run for a road or-
Right.
Fill dirt or something like that, but it's 90% septic bank run.
And it's not just East Fishkill, it's the neighboring towns as well, so.
Yeah, a lot of it goes south, I mean, there's no, there's no-
There's no gravel, there's no mining, you know, there's very few mining operations going on and so.
Mr. Jackson used to come, if I remember.
He did, Vern used to come, yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
Which he still was.
Yeah. All right, so what we need to do is just set you up for another public hearing, as you know the process, and this you came, time you came in with plenty of time, so do I have a motion to set this up for a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So you still have your sign?
Yes, I do.
Good. Just change the date on it and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, item number 10, Appeal 4122, Susan Brophy, 34 Larchmont Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot side yard variance for an existing six-foot fence on the property line pursuant to Section 194-98 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I had to tell you, I walk by your house all the time, because I live on Brandy, so for me, I'm on Claude Branch and then take Larchmont because I don't like that curve around Creamery on Claude Branch. You have a lot of fences in your yard, you do.
I have a lot of weird fences that when we bought the house-
Exactly, thank you for saying that.
So we would like to make it one nice coherent.
But I don't see a six-foot fence.
So the front of my house has the chain link.
Right.
That was the original, which I would love to get rid of and put up a vinyl fence.
Yeah, we'd love to see that gone too, because chain-
The little tiny wood thing that is there, I have no idea, it kind of covers the garbage and the old owners were the ones that put that in, so the vinyl fence will, you know, incorporate that.
So this is not for an existing fence?
So, no, on-
Because it was written that it's an existing fence and I walked by it just the other day and said, where is it?
So the people that live next door to me-
Have a fence, a brown ugly fence.
Have whatever hodgepodge that they-
And it's like covered with vines and stuff, yeah.
Up there.
Right.
And then I never noticed it when we took the trees down because I had trees there for years that they claimed were theirs. And then when two trees fell, we realized they were mine and then the insurance company said, I really need to clean all that out, and so we got rid of it and I'd like to claim that property.
And I realized, because I've walked by there for years.
And I would like to claim it.
You've done a great job of cleaning it up, so.
I would like to claim it and put a fence up so that I don't have to see their stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's basically.
So the fence is not there now?
It is not there yet because Mid Hudson Fence said they would not put it up unless I had the variance.
So why are we saying it's on the property line then?
The fence is going to go on the property line.
Why?
I, well, I would like it on my property line so that their garbage and fence and stuff is easier for me to maintain.
But it has to be two feet inside.
Two feet in.
Two feet in.
So the problem is they have a shed, which I'm sure you've then seen, and whatever grows then between that two foot is going to grow over the fence. That's my issue.
To get back there, she's going to wind up with an argument from the neighbor.
So that's basically why I wanted to put it on the property line, just so that it's-
Have you talked to them about this?
We have and we have, she's just an interesting woman.
Okay, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not asking if she agreed, just have you talked with her?
I had said to her, initially I thought maybe she would just put their fence back up.
Just because the question would be, do they have a variance for that shed to be so close to the property line?
Yeah, that's on my comments from today's-
So I want to say-
That's on my site from-
So when they had, when they moved in, I think a year after us, then they had dogs on their property and I believe that-
You have a dog that barks at me, by the way.
He does, he's, he's, his name is Jack.
Goes from one side of the house to the other side of the house, he's like, oh, it's like-
When I put the fence up, he's going to be devastated because he's going to be like, well, I can't see anybody anymore.
That's true. What happened?
The, but I think that that shed was originally for the dogs. They have, it's just the truck that's been sitting there, the garbage that's there.
It appears to me, as I've walked by many times, that they've had multiple trucks like maintenance, so it looks like they're getting some work done over there.
Right now, they're doing work, for the last couple of weeks, they've been doing some work. I hope they clean up the rest of it because it's such an eyesore.
Right.
When we had the trees there, I didn't see it, and now with the trees gone, and I have said to her, I will take the garbage to the dump, I'll pay to have it removed. It just, you know, you're pulling my driveway and I look over and I'm like, wow.
Are you hoping to bring the fence all the way front?
Where the chain link goes across.[1599.36]
Oh, just to the front of the house?
Right, I want the chain link to go to the property, or the white vinyl fence to go to the property line, and then have the wood fence go down the back, just so it's easier to, just like I said, clean and maintain. It tends to be tons of poison ivy and strangle vines, and then I'm allergic to it, and--
Yeah.
Whose is this wire fence?
There's all sorts of fences on this -- on the property now.
So my fence, so the only fence that--
Some of them actually have bars across the top of the chain link, and others, it's just stakes.
Yes, that's theirs, that's their stuff. Anything that is on--
I thought around your pool, I thought to the -- on the left side of your house, your pool, there was a -- like a stakes in the ground, you know?
We put a makeshift for the dog and for the pool, yeah, just that's it.
That's just what I see walking by.
No, that's just temporary, just until, because when--
Got it.
Also, you had a tree come down that took down--
Oh, that might have taken down some of your fence.
I had a tree, yes.
Okay.
You had some, yeah.
Yes.
I met your brother today, he told me all about it.
We had a tree came down and took out the fence and the pool, and then I had another tree come down to take out the front of the house, and I said I -- before something really takes out the house.
Okay.
But yeah, no, basically, I want to have just the white vinyl fence going across, and then we put a new black chain link fence around the pool, and then on the property line that separates me from them.
So the chain link fence that's going around, it's going to be vinyl coated?
It is.
Okay.
It's a black vinyl coat, we got rid of the silver--
Thank you.
--ugly fence.
Right, that's the difference between making it a decorative fence and having it be a--
And we fenced it in--
It's not supposed to be--
And we fenced it in, so it's rectangular. Whatever was there prior was a lot of--
Yeah.
I don't even--
Okay, so the purpose of the reason that we have the fences 2 feet in is because then it allows you to maintain the other side of it. So then you're walking on your property to maintain the other side of it. That's the reason that a fence is put the 2 feet in.
Right.
If it's not, and that's 2 feet in--
So that's my -- they will not maintain anything. She's never has, and when we took down the trees, I had offered the guy, you know, was a friend, I said, "Whatever you want to take out," you know, "He can take out top, clean up, so that at least it looks nice and clean."
Right.
And she was out there with the video camera and taking pictures and complained about everything, so that's why I wanted to put it up on, like I said, on the property line, because then it probably would be up against probably her shed, and I don't have to worry about really what's going to grow in there. Even now, we can't -- we're constantly spraying with, you know, weed killer, and constantly out there with the, you know, weed whacker, and trying to just keep all the weeds from growing.
I mean, within three weeks, it's back again.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, this time of year, it grows wild.
The thing is, right next to the shed is their wire fence, and your fence is going to just be on the -- will be touching their fence.
I'm hoping that once we put the fence up, they'll take that fence down. That's -- that would be my assumption.
They probably won't, but--
You know, or she'll probably just have it leaning up against it.
You know what I mean, somebody would actually have to go physically remove it, and--
So, basically, that stuff was there, it kind of had leaned up against all those big white pines, because they have -- she has a dog also, so I believe they just kind of nailed whatever wood fencing to the trees, and then leaned those, yes, whatever those screens are up along -- so that's why I figured that I wouldn't have to see it.
There is a significant difference in property maintenance from one property to the next.
And that's what's sad.
Say that is understood to the board members.
Yes.
And that's what's sad, I mean, she has garbage back -- I mean, there's -- it's garbage.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to--
Yeah, the issue is, again--
I don't -- I walk by quick enough that I don't see all that.
I mean, if you can do it within, you know, 2 feet, then at least you can go on the other side, do the weed whacking, put the weed killer, whatever, and then this won't be an issue, because theoretically, your neighbor can come and complain that you have to move your fence by 2 feet for all--
So if I do, if I go -- if I give her, if I go back 2 feet--
Then you're good.
And then she doesn't put a fence and takes it down, then I have to worry about going in there when her dog is out?
I mean, you have to--
If you're going to maintain--
And if I go back there to maintain that 2 feet of property, she's going to have an issue, because then she's going to be telling me, "I took down that's my tree, you took down my tree," you know, even if it's a weed, she's going to be -- she was annoyed because the tree fell and disturbed her fence, because that's what her fence was laying on, was my tree that came down. You know what I'm saying? It's not an easy--
You said it was nailed to the fencing, is what was keeping it up.
Some of the fencing you may see back there are actually leftover parts from--
From her stuff.
They're on your fences.
It's not -- it's not from me.
They're cages.
So--
Yeah, it's very hodgepodge.
Yes.
Especially, and even color-wise, it's very hodgepodge.
It's like 5, 6-foot high pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I would call it not quite--
There's tarps laying over it.
It kind of looks like stockade, but then when you look close enough, it's not really, so, yeah, I know what you're saying.
I mean, if you look in the backyard, there's like a -- I think there's a backhoe back there.
Oh, I -- there's so much vegetation that I didn't--
And there's a shed on the other side of the property that I'm sure was on the other person's, I mean, it's just, yes.
So I think based on the property maintenance and the non-compatibility of neighbors here, I think this is something that's seriously--
Motion to advertise.
And, you know, she may object and will consider--
I would say, I think that -- I don't think she -- because like I said, I had asked her initially, like after everything was done, I said, "Do you want to put up the -- do you want to put up the fence back? I'll help you put up the fence back, I'll even split the cost with you." And, you know, she was -- I had to discuss it with my husband, that's all she ever says, I had to discuss it with my husband, so, and then never gets back to you, so.
Okay, motion to advertise?
Yeah, just so you guys can see what we're talking--
And like her driveway, I want to say, has probably, I think it's maybe 2 feet of property.
Of fences, it's just like, look at this, this is -- like I said, some of it looks like it was stockade, and then not.
Yeah.
But there's this fence here, there's this fence here for the dog, so on their property.
And then all the way in the back, there's--
This is where it was knocked -- it looks like it must have been knocked down by the trees, because you said it took out the pool, or, you know, whatever got to the pool. So that was -- that's the temporary fencing that Matt was talking about, but it's just--
Yeah, I'm not going to clean it up the--
I'd rather clean it up, too, so--
So, yeah, so again, I have a motion that--
Go ahead, motion advertised.
I mean, I already made a motion to advertise.
Second.
So you see just the -- like this is the front of the house, that's what you see, and then -- all right, so motion advertised, do I have a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you next month. Jackie will give you information, you got to put a sign on your property.
Okay.
And I'll walk by and make sure it's there. Thank you.
By the way, if you go boo to the dog, he'll go run.
Oh, really? Aw, he does bark at me, yes.
He does, he barks at everybody in the street, as soon as you come onto the property, he's like, "Oh, pet me, pet me, pet me," you know?
No, all right. Last but not least, item number 11, Appeal 4123, Reagan Salvas, 10 Russo Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 4-foot side yard variance for an existing 200-square-foot carport pursuant to Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. All right, so, good evening. Town code allows for age -- well, I guess technically you can have 2 sheds, right, Matt? Because you can have a shed and a second accessory structure.
Right.
So we have 2 issues here, we have the fact that there's a third accessory structure here.
We have a total of 3.
Right, and the third accessory structure is of what material?
It's a cement base and a metal frame, and I did a good job of preventing it from being an eyesore, I have it hidden behind the shed.
I know, but I'm asking what material it is.
It's--
Does it have solid walls?
No, no.
It does not, so it's of a temporary nature, the material is of a temporary nature, which by code is only allowed on your property for 6 months at a time, doesn't -- regardless of what the base is. So, the question is, you're still only allowed 2 structures if you want to keep this, because there is a concrete base, I get that, I saw that.
Yeah.
Do you want -- are you going to make this a permanent structure, that you're going to put a permanent walls to it?
It's drilled -- it's drilled in with -- into cement.
Doesn't matter, it's still a canvas structure.
Okay.
It's going to wear out, it's going to -- and those things blow -- start blowing in the wind, and they look horrible. I know you have it screened well, I'm not -- I'm not saying that the one big shed blocks it, but you'd see the top of it, but there's a reason that the town code only allows those structures for 6 months at a time, so while you're here, do you want to get the permission to make that a permanent structure?
Yes, that could--
Otherwise, you'd have to -- well, you'd have a concrete pad to nowhere.
How long do I have? That's the question.
Because I don't know, the other board members, one of our members is not here,